October 2nd, 2023 Work Session. Please stand as we observe the moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Horn.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any elected officials out in the audience tonight. So, Board members, our wonderful student rep, Ms. Erdel, will not be joining us this week since she is playing in the district volleyball tournament. We wish her luck in the tournament and look forward to her returning later in the month. I also want to recognize our wonderful Harden Valley teacher Dana Sherrill and her students who are present tonight to observe our board meeting. Ms. Sherrill is the Program Instructor for Teaching as a Profession at Harden Valley Academy, so please help me welcome her and her amazing students. Thanks for being here. Thank you to everyone who is in attendance tonight. I know we have kind of a full house tonight, so I just want to remind everybody that this is the Board's Public Business Meeting to discuss items that come before us for consideration. So, we just ask that you be respectful and courteous at all times, and please be mindful that the sound carries very easily in this room. So, if you do need to talk to your neighbor or take a phone call, please just step outside to do so. And I also want to say the Board did have a closed-door meeting earlier before this meeting, and it was pertaining to school safety. And under state law, the Board had that closed meeting, so that was not at the decision of the Board, but we are obligated to follow state law, so that's why the meeting was was closed this afternoon. Are there any requested changes to this meeting agenda? Yes, Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to add a discussion on private practitioners.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, motion by Ms. Horn. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Bike. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, we do have a presentation. We're going to start off with the Advanced NOx presentation, so I would like to introduce Ms. Allison Fluid. Hello, welcome, Allison. Thanks for being here tonight.
For the opportunity to talk to you about Advanced NOx and give you an update on the comprehensive land use and transportation plan efforts that we have been undertaking for the past several months here. First off, some advanced thank yous to this group. You all have played an important role. The school system has played an important role as a subcommittee member throughout our process, so we appreciate the advice, feedback that we have been able to glean from the school system throughout this process, so thank you for that. Quick overview of what I'm going to be discussing today. Just wanted to give an update on some of the background that goes into our plan, but then really focusing on the recommendations that came out pertaining to land use and transportation. A little bit of information on our policy direction, and then finally talking a bit about the growth policy plan, which is where we kind of are right now, and that helps us understand our next steps and how we're going to be finalizing this process. So, we began all the way back in November 2021 with the inception of the Advanced NOx process. And that took us through the development of understanding our existing conditions, what that state of the county is, and some of the things we needed to be attuned to as we began to understand future trends. We then moved into the development of scenarios to understand the different alternative futures that might be out there as we needed to consider the development of our recommendations. So, early at the beginning of this year, we started that recommendations development process for both the land use and transportation sections of this process. And we've moved into final plan documentation and adoption. That's going to carry us through the remainder of this year and likely into early 2024. So, you all have no doubt heard some about the Advanced NOx process and the comprehensive plan, but just to give a little bit of a refresher, really what we're intending to do through this process is provide a blueprint for the county's future. Some goals, action strategies, and understanding how we can be a little bit more directed in our process for understanding implementation. How we need to better apply our funding in a way that aligns with some of the growth that we expect to see here in the county going forward. And most importantly, we see this plan as a communication tool that articulates the county's vision and helps us understand how we can have the private sector support that vision. Some of the things that we hope to achieve through this process are things such as enhanced economic development, resiliency of the community. Thinking about our workforce advancement and how that plays into our land use and transportation decisions. Also affordability within the county is something that we have been considering throughout this planning effort, as well as prosperity for our people and places within the county. So, early on in the process, we developed a vision that helped us kind of establish charting the course where we wanted to go. We come back to our vision, we come back to our goals really throughout the development of our scenarios and our recommendations to help us understand if we are on track and that we're adequately reflecting the needs of what we've heard from our stakeholders in the public. But our overall vision was identified as a thriving county that honors its natural beauty and cultural heritage while supporting diverse people and businesses. And our goals, we had eight goals that were actually identified. I'm not going to read them all the way through here, but they were community character, conservation, infrastructure investment, economic growth, workforce, housing options, transportation, and recreation. So, you can see we're really approaching this from many different angles, which you would expect from a comprehensive planning process. We had a lot of different stakeholders, a lot of important groups that were involved as we went through the plan development. We had two different committees. We had an advisory committee that were made up primarily of citizens from across the county, as well as a technical committee that were more subject matter experts and some of our agency partners from our member jurisdictions and other groups. We also had targeted stakeholder feedback where we needed to learn a little bit more about specific topics. We had two subcommittees as a part of this effort. I mentioned one of them early on was the school system, so we were interested in gaining feedback specific to the needs of the schools as we were going through this. And the other subcommittee was utilities, so our utility providers, learning a little bit more from them and some of what their needs are and how those align with what we were doing as well. One thing I'll also note is that we routinely reached out, not just to the county commissioners and the planning board, but also the city of Knoxville and the town of Farragut. This plan really focuses on the unincorporated area of the county, but we know that it's incredibly important for us to have a strong connection with those jurisdictional partners because our decisions don't just stop at a boundary. So, thinking about our public engagement, this was another incredibly important portion of what we were doing. We had three primary rounds of engagement focused on initial listening and learning. So, that's where we're kind of talking about those vision and goals, kind of making sure we were on the right track for this planning process. Making choices, where we talked about our scenario planning, and I'll mention that here in a moment. And then coming into that recommendations development process, having folks get a chance to take a look at where we were, offer us some feedback, and make sure we are on the right track for prioritizing some of those efforts. So, moving us into our land use and transportation recommendations, I mentioned the words scenario planning. And really, this is just a fancy way for saying that we wanted to look at different alternatives. We didn't want to pin ourselves down right from the start by saying, hey, we need to go in one particular direction. So, this gave us a chance to think about what might happen if we continue to grow in the way that our current plans and current trends are taking us. But then also thinking about a couple of different alternate ways that we could grow and exploring those a little bit more. And evaluating all of those things against some of our goals and some of the criteria that we're able to kind of measure that come out of those goals. Once we did all of that, we asked the public to weigh in, tell us kind of what they thought, their reactions to each of those different scenarios. And we came back, and we kind of took a little bit of the best of everything that we saw, and that helped us develop what we called our preferred scenario. And you can see that expressed here in kind of terms of general land uses, what that might look like in terms of residential, commercial, mixed use, and employment in areas across the unincorporated portion of the county. That was incredibly helpful for us. Again, we took that, measured it. We wanted to understand how that was performing against our different goals, and we called that our scorecard. Now, you can see we have our three different scenarios and little pink dots that start to appear here as we talk about our preferred. And the moral of the story here was that what we were looking for to get out of a preferred scenario was something that was going to perform as well or better as the best one of our scenarios that we had explored. And we were able to do that with our preferred scenario. This is really helpful because we kind of start at that hazy level, and then we start to dig down into more granularity, and that's where we ultimately end up with our future land use map. One of the ways that we do that is by helping us define the ways that we're characterizing our land uses. And we chose to do that through a way called place types. And this is essentially a means for us to think about our land uses by providing different characterizations. You can see traditional neighborhoods, corridor mixed use, town center mixed use. All of those are examples of walkable, compact growth. We have additional details about each one of these place types, and you can see additional ones here as well, whether they be rural areas such as rural conservation, rural crossroads commercials, rural living. Or also suburban growth like suburban residential, mixed residential, corridor commercials, or business parks. One of the benefits that we find about this place types driven approach is that it allows us to have a little bit more flexibility in the way that we consider housing and housing types and the way that those are all factored in to our land use planning. So, once we had those place types defined and established, we needed to create our future land use map. So, we developed those detailed definitions for our place types and then applied them across the area, kind of took that hazy preferred and got more and more granular thinking about how we apply those place types. There might need to be different rules to how that's done, special factors like utility capacity, historic districts, of course, considering our previous plans. And that's what allowed us to arrive at our future land use map. Of course, it's a big county, probably hard to dig into all the details right there. I certainly invite any of y'all that are interested in learning more about this to check this out online where we have all of this information posted. But essentially, this just provides us more information to understand how all of those place types are are coming into play with our future land use map. This is going to be our starting point. I think many of you are likely aware that the county is also embarking on the update of its Unified Development Ordinance. And this is a complement, a helpful first step to understand what this should look like, what the right choices are that we might want to make in terms of land use in the county. And then understanding some of what the rulebook should look like. That's really what the next step is through the UDO. Transportation recommendation is also an incredibly important point. I think you all have discussed these in previous meeting. Essentially, we're looking at these by different types, whether they be safety oriented projects, capacity adding projects, modernization projects, which is where we're talking about taking a roadway facility that maybe isn't quite up to the standards that we'd like it to be. And adding something to that, be it shoulders, additional lane width, kind of making it a safer and more acceptable roadway. And then also multimodal accommodations. The county has been very proactive over the years about greenway planning and how that integrates in with some of our other facilities, so we certainly wanted to carry that forward. One of the things that's unique for our plan is thinking about this kind of one step forward. So, we didn't stop at the recommendations identification process. We took that the next step to understand what we thought the funding levels might be. We're really thinking about those county level facilities now. Our plan doesn't look at the statewide roads that we have. It doesn't look at the interstate because we know that the TPO is doing that through the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So, we wanted to understand how can the county better allocate some of its resources for transportation. So, we understood some of the different project types that we wanted to have out there, how we might want to allocate that money. We actually took that a next step by prioritizing. We actually took that a next step by prioritizing specific projects and understanding how those might be allocated throughout the life of our plan. So that gives a financially constrained perspective of how we think we can use those resources going forward. One other element of our plan that I think is notable is that we considered the fiscal impact of what is happening in terms of growth for the county. And this is really kind of looking at the revenues in terms of property tax, sales tax, and then cost to serve. So what is that difference? Are we spending more in serving some of those land uses that are going to be coming out there in the future than we're bringing in in terms of revenue? Or are we having a positive fiscal impact where we're bringing in more revenue from those areas than it takes to serve them? One of the things we were happy to see is that if we were to continue our current planning trends, the status quo, we would see that there is a deficit. So essentially, we would be taking in less than what we would be actually paying out in terms of serve those facilities. However, in our preferred scenario, where we have landed with our future land use map, there's actually projected to be a surplus where we're going to be taking in more than what it takes to serve some of those facilities. Just kind of wrapping this up in terms of policy direction, it's important for us to link the goals of our plan to the policies that help us, again, chart a course into the UDO and into actually making sure that this is an implementable plan. And then we've taken that one step further into some specific actions. And you'll be able to see those laid out in our plan in terms of specific policy actions. They really run the gamut, whether they're land use, transportation focused, even parks and recreation oriented, and then some specific actions as well. Also a plan management cycle, one of the biggest things that we heard is we need to make sure that this isn't something that gets stale, we need to make sure that this is something that continues to be actionable and that we understand when the updates need to be put in place to make this a living and fresh document. And so that was something that we considered as we developed a plan management cycle, both understand how we work within the course of a year with budget setting and application, and then also thinking about a 10-year update cycle for the plan. Our next steps center around our growth policy. I think you all know the relationship of our adopted plans within the county. The 20-year growth plan is inherently related to what we're going to be doing, which is going to kind of take the place of everything you see in that second row there. The comprehensive land use and transportation plan is going to replace the general plan and the sector plans. So we're going to have one unified document that fills the role of both of those items that you see there. We're reconvening the growth policy committee. State law requires that every city and county government has a 20-year growth plan. This was last updated during its adoption in the year 2000. So the intent of the committee is to consider proposed amendments to the plan and allow growth areas, allow growth in areas where infrastructure is in place. Our growth policy committee members, Betsy is a member of our growth policy committee. We also have representatives from the county, from the city, town of Farragut, our utilities, the chamber and soil conservation. And the growth policy committee is required to meet two times. Our first meeting will be on October 24th, so it's coming up here in just a couple weeks. Our second meeting is yet to be determined. And kind of the final outcome there will be legislative actions from the county commission, city council, and board of aldermen. So with that, thank you again for the opportunity. I'll take any questions that y'all might have.
Does anyone have any questions for Allison? I just want to thank you, Allison. I know that smart planning is important to our community as a whole, and I live in Hardin Valley, so I hear daily about traffic and growth and everything. And, you know, land use really affects all of our lives, whether it's our schools, where we work, how we play in our recreation. So I'm looking forward to serving on the committee in the next steps. So thank you for giving us that update and for being here this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Dr. Ryswick, do you have an update for us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon. I want to begin with a reminder that tomorrow is the last day of our annual coupon book campaign. I also want to thank all of our students, families, for participating in our biggest fundraiser of the year. I also have a couple of other updates I'd like to share. Some of these will be on the agenda for later tonight, so just want to share some of these with the public as well. So as you know, we've been looking for a piece of property in the Farragut community capable, capable of providing relief to the overcrowding and population growth that we've seen in that region. That's not new to this board, we talked about that last year as well. So I'm excited to say, and you see this on your agenda for tonight, that we've identified a property that we believe can provide long-term solution for this community. It's 41 acres, and this piece of land is not only larger than the property, because some people ask the question of why didn't we finish the property off last year? Why didn't we, we had, we had some property we were looking at and looking at those things. This property, this time, 41 acres, is, is larger than the property we considered last year, also with the price. It is $4.5 million, as you see on your agenda. Property we looked at last year was the $3.1 million, but the cost not included in that due to where that location was, was an estimated $3.5 million for an access road that would have taken that total price to, it was about $6.6 million is what we were looking at. So that was one of the factors in us considering what we needed to do, just what that infrastructure looked like, and Dr. Adams and his team did a great job looking at that. I'd also say while we're on that topic, the other part of that, we felt like the solution for Farragut long-term, just to, just to put an elementary school there, might have been a little short sighted for what we're trying to do and what we want to do looking ahead. I think you've seen that from, from Dr. Adams' commitment to this facility assessment, also to Ms. Himmelgarner's assessment to a salary study. We want to look at more comprehensive solutions for communities. Lots of times you can do the short-term thing and build an elementary school, but those elementary students have to go to middle schools and high schools at some point. So instead of just coming back and asking every three years for something different, we really wanted to take a step back and look at something larger and, well, had more capacity, and we think that this property gives us that with these 41 acres. So in short, that this overall would be roughly $2 million less than what we would have had to invest in the property last time. So I feel confident this land will provide the space that we need, and I'm also going to ask that the board approve this tonight, and again, I know we'll have discussion later on that. I feel like it's our, it's our right answer. I also think there's been some confusion in the community about next steps, and I want to clarify those as well. At this time, as I said before, our, our goal was to look at everything when we look at a community. We know down the road, again, middle schools, high schools, and other kinds of things are going to be impacted by that. We also know that communities feel very strongly, you all know in each of your districts, about staying together. We know in Farragut the anchor matters a lot, everybody wants to have the anchor. We also know rezoning is always a difficult challenge, as we saw through Mill Creek and those sorts of things. So just to clarify and kind of officially get it on the record, I wanted everyone to know, our plan will be to look at the property today. We think that that's the right thing. As you know, property is hard to find in Farragut. This, this property is in Farragut proper, in the town of Farragut. We've worked with the city officials there, as well as the county, to try to find property and have looked hard for, for over a year. I know Ms. Horn's been part of those conversations too, as we've gone on throughout the, the past year. But I want to talk about what next steps will be. So our, our guest, I mean, our ask tonight is to have the purchase of the property. At our quarterly meeting later this month in October, Dr. Adams will bring a presentation that will both show the challenges that we have in the whole feeder pattern of Farragut, where the overcrowding exists. I mean, just kind of off the top of my head, Hardin Valley 12 years ago was built to relieve Farragut, and now it's back up to over 2,100 students, so we see the growth is definitely there through that whole feeder pattern. So he'll bring the, the challenges, the data that, that are there, as well as some options for the board to consider and for the public to see what some of those options for a Farragut solution is. And then our plan will be, after the board sees that, to then hold community meetings, talk to the community at large and get input there as well, and then circle back in the coming months with our greatest, our, our top recommendation, kind of what we do with Mill Creek. We brought all the recommendations we had, but we kind of had one that we felt was the best after getting all that input. So I think there was some information out this weekend, and I felt it was important for me to say that, that, that this is not a done deal. And I think there were different scenarios put out that we started hearing through different social media, spent most of the weekend on that, thinking through those things, and just wanted to clarify that for you, the board, as well as the public. But we look forward to that. I think there's a long-term action, action we can take for Farragut to help them out. Another item, I'm also pleased to share that you'll see, and again, this is for the public because we had a long conversation about the annual action plan in the board retreat a couple weeks ago, so we're excited to bring that 23-24 annual action plan. You'll recall that this is a new tool that we introduced last year. I think kudos to our ARA team and Doc, and Dr. Lautner. So I'll go ahead and give you that degree. And Ms. Lautner, as we talked through those at the board retreat, kind of where we were on that for last year, as well as this year. So just want to clarify too for the public, that the plan that we provided to the board this week has been updated to reflect the new measurable and milestones for this year that we talked about. And just to be clear on this too, the intent is for this to be a higher level, one-year roadmap for the district. Essentially, this plan outlines what we're going to do. It's not necessarily going to show you all the steps of how we're going to do that. If we were going to do that, it would probably take hundreds and hundreds of pages to look at that. One example would be, if we did that, would be our literacy deep dive analysis that we're talking about. If we listed everything that Dr. Phillips and her team are doing around literacy, you'd have high-quality instructional materials, quality PLCs, you'd have walkthroughs in the classroom, and you would have just all, these are all the strategies. This plan really is meant to be a more what we're going to do and to measure against those outcomes if we've made those. So I think that's important just for, again, for the public to know, this is not an extensive play-by-play of everything we do every day, it's really more the measurables that you as the board can then hold the staff accountable to achieving those outcomes. So our team does look forward to another great year of progress and continue focus on accelerating learning for all of our students. And then lastly, but not least, I want to remind everyone that fall break is next week. I don't know that I needed to remind everyone that. My, my daughter tells me that every day, and has for the last three weeks. So I want to encourage families, this is on a serious note, really want to encourage families to take this time and really talk to your students about the importance of threats and about safety of schools. You know, we understand, we live in a world of social media where all these things happen and are real, and I've said this before and want to say again, our team takes threats very seriously. The hours and the man-hours we spend every week pursuing any leads with our law enforcement partners, that can be anything from home visits to background checks to, you know, looking at cybersecurity, can't go into all the things that we do, but we do these on a daily basis to make sure. We practice our protocols at our schools, and when we feel necessary to use those, we do use those because we're not going to take any of these lightly. So we do ask as parents that if you just spend some time talking to your students just about the seriousness of something that can be posted online, a picture that can be taken, a word said in anger, we, that's a lot of folks who, and we, we'll continue to do that, but if we can be thinking that way, I think it makes a big difference. So we're doing lots of protocols, I want to brag on our security division, just in what they do, they respond quickly, they respond 24 hours a day. We have people on shift 24 hours a day, seven days a week, running these things down and working with law enforcement. I know because we get texts on all those and, and have lots of conversations on all those too. And we are serving that because that's the most important thing to keep our safe and our, our students and staff safe. We do things like random weapon searches, something we started this semester, as we said, and we appreciate the board taking action on that. We have begun those and they've gone, they've gone really well. And I think that's another deterrent for us. But just want to remind people the three things. One, trust that all of our schools have a highly trained officer in them, but they also have a highly trained teachers and highly trained administrators. They all have protocols that they practice, practice on a regular basis. We're very religious on how we track those and turn those in every quarter to make sure we're hitting all of those. And then the most important thing, if you see something, say something. Like let us know if something feels off. We get sometimes random tips from parents, we get students who say something didn't feel right, and they tell us those, we pursue all of those when those happen, and that's what it's going to take to continue to keep us all safe. And schools being welcoming environments, that's important for us as well. Just in closing, I just want to encourage our families and staff to enjoy fall break. As we've said so many times, the process we're on right now is a three to five-year journey, it's not a sprint, it's a marathon to get our processes right so that we can do the best for all of our kids and all of our staff. So I know I've encouraged our staff, and I will do the same, to take some time during fall break, recharge so you can come back and be your best, and we really appreciate that and hope everyone has a good one. And with that, Madam Chair, concludes my report for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Ryswick. I think those are great points you brought up, and I know I'm looking forward to fall breaks as well, so, I know my kids are. Dr. Adams, do you have a custodial staffing update?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Currently, out of our 398 positions, we have 90 vacancies. 11 of those schools exceed 50%. We are currently working on a plan to, to bring back 10 part-time employees who are committed to come back and work part-time. So we are going to explore that and, and continue to explore that and recruit and retain as many custodians as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another presentation. Ms. Paula, you want to come on up? Ms. Paula's going to do a Knox County Education Association presentation for us as well. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Ryswick. I would like to thank you all for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. As mentioned, my name is Paula Hancock, and I serve as president of the Knox County Education Association. I am here tonight to submit to you a petition containing the signatures of Knox County educators regarding continuing and collaborative conferencing. As this board knows, Tennessee law recognizes that a collaborative relationship between the board and its professional employees will assist in the establishment and maintenance of an educational climate and working environment that will attract and retain highly qualified professional staff. Collaborative conferencing, or PECA, recognizes the obligations of the board and its teachers to collaborate on matters relating to the terms and conditions of professional employee service and sets forth the process whereby we can work together towards producing an agreement or memorandum of understanding on issues such as salary, insurance, and working conditions. We in Knox County are very fortunate to have gone through this process with the district in the past and have already have an existing memorandum of understanding which is valid. Your ratification of our prior MOU affirms to educators in Knox County that your value, that you value our work and our opinions. We appreciate the opportunity to collaborate on matters that are essential to attracting and retaining highly qualified professional staff so that together we can achieve the highest possible educational standards in our school district. So why am I here before you tonight with another round of signatures requesting to start this process again? The answer is quite simple. The law puts this burden on educators to obtain signatures every three years and to submit these signatures to you in the specific month of October. As the board knows under the law, once this petition has been submitted to you, the board then has the duty to appoint an equal number of board members and professional employees to serve on a special questioning committee who will set up the conditions and particulars of conducting a confidential poll of all eligible professional employees. The confidential poll is a vote by teachers about whether they would like to engage in collaborative conferencing. As president of the association, I would be honored to accept an appointment to be on the special questioning committee. We also graciously ask that the Board of Education appoint the following professional employees to the special committee if the board sees fit, and that would be John Chuck O'Donnell and Stacy Reese. Again, thank you for accepting this petition, and the Knox County Education Association looks forward to working with you in this process going forward. Would it be possible for someone to take a picture of us with the board chair and the superintendent turning in this petition? It truly is a proud moment for Knox County educators.
I'll take your picture.
Our educators?
Take your picture.
Do we need to set a stand over here?
I know, I'm just sitting in the front. Thank you for that, Ms. Paula, and thank you for the board members and the other committee members who are willing to serve on that committee. This will take us into our discussion for our October 4th regular session agenda. A few announcements about that before we get into the agenda items. I want to let you know- I want to let you know that the district address in agree, in the agreement for item 6C6 has been corrected, and an updated version of that agreement is attached to your electronic version. Also, without objection, we may have an item that will be added to our consent items prior to Wednesday's meeting. It is not finalized yet, but hopefully our annual dual enrollment agreement with TCAT will be ready for our consideration. The Tennessee Board of Regents has an October 20th deadline for the agreement to be approved, so to support our students taking those courses, we will need to consider it at this time. Ms. Cottney will email us as soon as that's available. So with that, we'll go ahead and get into our regular agenda. So we'll start with item number five, which is our committees. And we did talk about these committees and roles at our board workshop, was that last week? That's the last week, huh? I just want to say that I did take everyone's requests into consideration and also balance the work and responsibilities of each board member to each committee. And I do want to say through this process, we are unique as an elected body. A lot of elected bodies, the chair just appoints people to different committees, but I do like that everybody submits what they are interested in, and we also vote on that, which is also not needed, but it is something that we've always done, and so we will be bringing that to a vote on Wednesday's meeting. So with that, is there any discussion on item number five? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I noticed that the Clothing Center is not included on this list of committees. Is there a reason for that?
That's a good question. Ms. Cottney?
Ms. Harrington, would you like, I know that Advisory Council has changed.
Yeah, I know there's been some, some changes to the Clothing Center.
I think so last year at the board retreat, this was discussed, if I recall, that we decided, you decided that we would not have our present, representation on the Clothing Center. If that's something that the board wishes to reinstate, we're more than happy to have a board member represented. But I think, if I recall correctly, no one had expressed an interest in signing up, and so I'm assuming that was just a carryover.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't think to bring it up at the retreat, but speaking of the annual plan, and I know we have that before us again tonight, and it references over and over again our current strategic plan, which does expire this coming year, correct? Typically, a district-wide strategic plan would take more than just a couple of months to pull off. I don't know what's been done historically because I wasn't here in 2019 when the last plan was approved, but does there need to be at some point this school year, a strategic planning committee put in place, and would there be board representation on that committee historically? It seems like that would be a larger community-wide effort. Again, I don't have experience, I don't know how it's been done in the past, but, and I know that's off the cuff, so.
Good question.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Watson. You are correct on the date that it expires, and I think that, I don't, I mean, I have served in processes in those, but I don't know that I've ever been in a position, so I mean, I might have to maybe defer to Terry or Gary to know. I think maybe it's been done different ways, maybe that's why, but they may know better on that part.
Thank you, Superintendent Ryswick and Madam Chair. Mr. Watson, I think the answer is that it's been done differently every single time we've done it over the last decade or more. I know when Jim McIntyre was superintendent, it was more of a staff process. They engaged with a third party to make a recommendation on a plan. There was lots of community meetings held, and all of that input gathered together for a board vote. The last process, there actually was a board committee formed with three board members who worked on that plan, I know Ms. Horn, Ebony Satterfield, and I believe Ms. Owen was on that committee. And the committee actually brought a recommendation to the board for their consideration and approval, so it's been done several different ways.
I'm assuming even in the second model, when there was a board committee, there's probably still a tremendous amount of staff engagement, I would have thought. Isn't that correct? I mean, I'm sure that those three, you all didn't just go off by yourself and make a plan and say, here you go, rock it out, right? Dr. Ryswick, again, I know this is off the cuff, but have you given, I mean, I know you're, you're a planner, which I appreciate. So have you given some thoughts to, again, I'm only stating this because we're like nine months out from when the next, the current plan expires, and we probably need to be putting some thought to that, so.
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, no, I think if you're asking my opinion of it, I would say...
Well, I'm really asking if, if you've already given some thought to, like, hey, I know it's expiring, here's what I'm thinking we probably need to do, or...
No, I mean, I think we, yeah, you're right, we think about everything. So I would say this, I mean, I think, yes, I mean, there are a few things that, that kind of the board charges to do. One, I don't mess with my evaluation, my contract and annual, I mean, the strategic plan for the district is kind of your all's plan, I agree with the staff's involved in it. I'll tell you what has worked, the formula that's worked well for us in my 16 months, it's hardly been 16 months, but has been, I think, having some idea. We have had a lot of success. When you look at almost every report that's been brought to us, we've had some level of an external group that has helped with that. And I'll tell you why that's been beneficial to us, is it means we haven't had to pull our staff off of their work, right? You know, and the whole super, the special ed and the student success dive, you know, Mr. Myers and all of those teams were still able to keep on their work, they weren't splitting time, running focus groups and doing, plus I think it, I think what we've learned too, you know, Ackerman helped with some of that, and we've had, you know, the Katamba Group work with the Region Five Plan. I think, one, they're experts at processes and engagement and timelines and focus, and they could manage that project. So that's helped our staff not to, again, have to split duties on what they're doing, they're able to focus on students and teachers. And I think they know the processes, and I think there's some level of credibility too, when it's not the people inside doing all of that and holding focus, who got invited and who didn't. I mean, that, like, no matter what, you can't talk to 60,000 people and their parents. So I think what we have seen work well is that, I mean, some idea of direction and where we want to go. I mean, I appreciate that this board has been, you know, focused a lot around the four priorities that, you know, I'm saying are kind of the work of what any good district should be doing, and I think you guys have been supportive of that. We've tried to build, I think, many strategic plans, like in the Region Five Plan and those kinds of things. So, you know, for us, that's been really helpful to do, and, and that's a, that's a formula that we're probably more familiar with and seems to work well with the public and engagement too. So that, that would be my thought, that there'd be a way to do that and not take away from everybody else.
So, thank you, Dr. Ryswick. I think as a board member, and especially with having nine months until that plan expires, in hindsight, I think it would have been a great discuss a little bit at the retreat, but I think it'd be good to start entering into some of that conversation and having some of that more spelled out. I agree, I think an ex, somebody externally helping us with that is really important. But I also think now that we've done, you all have done the Region Five Plan, and my, my assumption is at some point there will be many plans for other regions too. How does that play, if that's the, if we want to continue to work that process, how does that work into a district-level plan? You know, what, what comes first? Is it the district-level plan and the other ones feed out of it? There's a lot of, I mean, to me, it's kind of exciting to kind of think about, like, what the possibilities are, but we don't have much time. And so I think it'd be good to maybe formally bring a recommendation about that process. Not that it needs to be approved, but I think the board should be in the know about how it's going to be done, and then also what the role we need to be playing in it, because I do think there probably is a role that we need to be playing in it, more than just approving it at the end, so.
I just, I would just add, you know, in our minds, a lot of this work we're doing around these strategic initiatives, we think, you know, they have been nice kind of reports and that sort of thing. I think those would be great things to hand to a third party, as kind of artifacts, beginning of the work on those. And to your question about, you know, chicken or egg, which comes first, I think, I think the overall strategic plan, the way I see it, is what sets the scope for the district, and then those individual Region Fives and/or, you know, especially a deep dive or literally deep dive, those are kind of deep tailored to those departments and/or schools in those, but they all should tie back to this greater umbrella of what the, of what the regional, district plan is. So, you know, I, I think we would be willing to, to look at some of those stuff, and as far as defining the, the board's role in that, I mean, I think I'd probably look to, to the chair and, and, you know, this kind of, we could probably have some conversations about, you know, how, how involved and that sort of thing, you know, you all would want to be. I mean, we're open to whatever that is or whatever you want to ask us to do as, as far as that goes.
Yeah, I think as we just discussed, there's lots of ways to do it, and I just don't want to, I know I personally don't want to wake up six months from now and thinking, huh, I wonder how that's going to happen in the next three months, you know what I'm saying? So, anyway, thank you.
Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that, that's a good point, that it is coming, and I appreciate not taking staff away from what they need to be doing. I think that's really important that we remember that. So maybe, I know the quarterly is probably getting kind of full, but maybe we can talk about it at the quarterly if there's time and room, and that'll give us a little bit of time to think about it over the next couple of weeks.
That's a good suggestion. Anyone else on this, on this item? All right, moving on to consent agenda, item and contracts. Items one through four, does anybody have any discussion on items one through four? Five or six? Seven or eight? Nine or 10? 11 or 12? Ms. Owen, yes?
I'm sorry, I need to go back to 10.
No, no, no. Yes.
I'm looking at the, the Karnes Fair Agreement. Sorry. On page two of the Karnes Fair Agreement, there are responsibilities for the Karnes Fair listed and types of vendors who will not be allowed access to the school campuses. And there's a list there of, of types of vendors who would not be allowed, things that are lewd and inappropriate, for example. And I would like to see us add political advertising to that list because that has been a specific issue that is occurring with this group, to the point that they actually sell vendor space for an additional amount if it's a political space. We can't do that inside a school. So I would like to see that specifically included in this MOU.
Anyone else on that item? Okay. Where were we? Did we do 11 and 12, 13, 14? Okay, that's what I thought. 15 or 16? Item 17 or 18? 19 or 20? 21 or 22? Okay, moving on to board policies. And we have the whole alphabet basically of board policies tonight. A or B? C or D? E or F? G or H? I or J? K or L? M or N? O, P or Q? No? R, S or T? And I do want to say that these were discussed at policy review, so we have had a thorough discussion of these policies. I don't want the public to think that we haven't talked about these policies at all, so. Moving on to eight grants. A or B? C or D? Oh, I'm sorry, Daniel. Thank you.
No worries, thank you, Madam Chair. On A, I'm assuming not, but is there any change in the original plan for that grant, or is this just receiving those final funds with the SR 2.0 grant?
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, this would be consistent with, it's spending the final funds and no changes since last brought before the board.
Okay. And then similar question on B, that SR 3.0 allotment is because, due to an increase, so there's a finite amount of funds in SR 3.0. So where the, where, what are we not going to be doing if we approve this?
They're, Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, you're correct, there's a finite amount of funds, so this is not additional funds that we are receiving in SR 3. This is a reallocation of some funds, and so technically this amendment to the application, a complete amendment will be brought before the board to show you where these funds were pulled from, but because this dealt with a facility, we wanted to go ahead and get this one before you all.
So I just want to be clear, and I'm not, I don't mean anything negative when I say this, but, so we're being asked to approve it before we know where it's coming from?
Mr. McPherson?
Sure, yes.
Ms. Himmelgaard, I mean that with grace, I don't mean that like...
And it's a, it's a good, it's a fair question, too, because, yes.
So he, so there's a, there's a couple of places, several places where, and I'll just use this example, tutors, for instance. We have a considerable amount of dollars unspent for tutors, right? Because of the hiring and so forth, the vacancies and the difficulty, and, and so, so that's, that's particularly, that's where our largest amounts come from. But as Ms. Himmelgaard said, when we bring this back to the, to the board, there will be some, you know, we will summarize, you know, where some of these changes are occurring.
So, Mr. McPherson, do you feel confident that within any unspent dollars, we can find that 350, or will we be cutting something we're actually doing?
No, sir, we won't be cutting. Our plan's not to cut something that we're doing. There's a, it would be funds that are, as a result of savings, whether it's from, from, you know, vacancies and so forth. So it's not like we're eliminating or reducing the scope of a program in order to do this.
Right, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on that item? Thank you, Mr. McPherson. Okay, moving on, item C or D? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following with the grant section tonight, on the C, the approved Title IV Stronger Connections Grant, is there somebody that can just speak to the all, overall focus of that grant and what the benefit's going to be? I thought that might be why you were here, so, thank you.
Hello, Ms. Cook?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. So this was a grant that falls under Title IV, so as we looked to see what, you know, how we could make stronger connections, it's all based on mental health. So we had to look and see how could we put things together that would make stronger connections with community agencies or within our own resources that we have within the district. So we looked at putting some things together, creating new positions. Part of this is building an infrastructure for when all this money's gone, like SR's here, and it'll be gone soon, so what we're looking to do is put together structures within our schools that support mental health and kind of expands on what we have right now. Because we have mental health clinicians are in our district right now. We used to in the past have mental health clinicians and case managers. Over the years, we've putted that down. This grant, the first part of it is to provide three more mental health case managers so that we can make those partnerships again. We're looking at providing two behavioral case managers, which is a new role that we have a lot of children who are dysregulated right now, and we need to make sure that the staff are getting the support that they need.
Ms. Cook, not to get too nuanced, but for the people out there listening, can you differentiate a little bit between those two positions that you just referenced? The mental?
The mental health case manager and the behavioral case manager. So mental health case manager will partner specifically with the clinicians that we have on, and they'll work on the mental health of students, a little bit more clinical than our school counselors, who have a very structured process that the state requires them to do. Behavioral case management will look more, if we have students who are struggling, we would predict that they would have a caseload, like a mental health... we would predict that they would have a caseload, like a mental health case manager would be. But they would help coordinate and help support the classroom staff, make sure that the kids are getting the services they need. So this is a position that we haven't had before. So it'd be direct services in the classroom, along with coordination of services that, you know, that we provide. So that's the two. So we have, we have this, and we also have, we're looking at other funding sources to see if we can have more of these behavioral people as well. We also look to provide youth mental health first aid trainings, which is a training that the state really supports, which looks at students or staff, or training staff to recognize when students may be suffering from suicidal ideation. And then what to do. It's a bit like if you have CPR. You know, if you learn CPR, you don't need to be a cardiologist to do that. You know, if someone has CPR, you know what you're going to do. You step into that space and take care of the person until the professionals can get there. Youth mental health teaches you that. It teaches you what to look for and then what to do until the counselors or the mental health professionals get there. So we actually have, we've been doing youth mental health first aid for a while. In Knox County, the state really promotes it as a way to support students. So we have, we have trainers right now, but we also partner with the Drug Commission. And we, you may have seen, they put some advertisements on the TV. We partner with them so that they can help train us. But we're going to look to train some of our own staff or some more of our own staff so that we can do that training. Our SOOs have training, because Jamie Blair, who's back there, she has, I mean, she is a trainer as well. So we have, we're looking to make sure that people have the information that they need to be able to support kids in that moment. We also are looking to have additional professional development, both for our counselors, our mental health workers, and then some principals. We have bullying and harassment training. And then also how to work with dysregulated students in your school. So those are the PDEs. And then we have a partnership with UT, which is the Compassionate Schools, which is University of Virginia. And UT have a process, a program, that we're going to look at providing supports in elementary schools, part of our character development programs that we have, to teach just about how to get along. So that's, that's an exciting partnership that we're looking to develop. And then our last part is looking at some of the master's level social workers we have, helping provide them the training that they need to become licensed clinical social workers and providing them that supervision and oversight. So that we're actually kind of growing our own mental health professionals based on the staff that we have at this time.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Cook, and thanks for the continued investment in our students. Appreciate you and your team.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that item? Questions? Thanks, Ms. Cook. Items E or F? G or H? Ms. Horne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question on the Health Department MOU. Do we hire these employees? And is this a new program? Is this a new, brand-new?
No, this is an ongoing MOU. We renew annually, and we do hire those folks.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't remember. Thanks.
Moving on to contracts. Nine, A or B? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Reiswick, I'm not sure who's best to speak to this that's here. But on item B, can someone share to us how that work fits into our overall plan for developing school leaders?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Jennifer, do you want that one? Or Keith, do you want that one? It could be, it could be split. I'll give you the one. Because it's, it's an HR function, but I know you've had input into it. So you want, you want to take a shot first? Okay.
Yeah, so we really had just a small number of participants. I think, I don't know the exact number. Jennifer probably knows the exact numbers from last year. I know this year, we've got a couple of regional directors, as well as some principals and assistant principals within their region that are, that are involved in that work. The bulk of the training that they get and what they work on in that is really around data literacy and around how to use student data for decision-making and having data-informed systems in your school. I know a lot of the scope of those projects that they work on and are learning through that system are around how to coach teacher, from the school level, around how to coach teachers around the use of data. And then, as it rolls up a layer, that's also what the regional directors are working on, is helping to think through that lens with principals around school improvement structures and using data to make those decisions. I think, and I'll let Jennifer speak more to that side of it, but I think at this point, we, this is a system that we've been trying with a few of our leaders, just to see if there is value in it and to see if, long-term, it is something that we would want to use as a tool to continue to help to invest in our leaders. But our sample size at this point has been fairly small.
Madam Chair, Mr. Watson, just to add a little bit of that, a little bit to that, this is in line with, with how procurement is, is asking us to approach things as well, to put out an RFP and award a couple of contracts so that we have them to execute on, should we have the funds allocated. And this, all three of these and B are to develop our school leaders, so to provide assistance to and development opportunities for our administrators and supervisor levels.
Ms. Himmelfarb, you're saying that the level that we execute on any one of these contracts is yet to be told, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Wilson?
And I'll apologize. If I could clarify, the, in particular, I was speaking to our work with Relay currently, and that's the one that we're most familiar with at this point. But those were, back to the procurement piece, additional folks have replied. And so that's kind of the state we're in right now, sampling it.
Anyone else? Item C or D? E or F? Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is D another one of those for procurement so that we have something available? Or is this meant to be for specific schools?
No, that is a term bid contract, so we have something available.
Thank you.
Sorry. Madam Chair, members of the Board.
You're fine, Dr. Adams. Okay, moving on to regular agenda items. Item A. Ms. Horne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's been much disagreement in Farragut about what the plan for a new school ought to be. But what most of us can agree on is that the need to alleviate the space issues that we have in our, in our schools is an issue and that our schools are overcrowded. Parents have been asking for some time to get rid of portable buildings. And so there are a range of ideas on what a new school plan ought to be. But for now, I'm very thankful that the contract, for this contract, regardless of whether a middle school is determined that is needed or whether it's an elementary school, whichever one is determined, is what the determination and the recommendation is, I'm just happy that we have a contract. It's important to note that we are only considering a land purchase this week. Some in the town may not like this location for a school, but the administration, and as Dr. Reiswick mentioned, I've been in some of those conversations with people in the town of Farragut. We've been searching for months and months for a property. And there is simply a very limited supply of property in Farragut. We looked at a lot of different properties, and there were, there just are not very many. And meanwhile, apartments are being built all around us constantly. And so I wish we were building a new school right now. We're so much, so really far behind, you know, where we wanted to be. But we are where we are. And so I appreciate the superintendent's desire to offer a long-term solution for the capacity of all the Farragut schools. I think that's wise to take into account the entire realm of schools as we're looking at building. For the past couple of years, the community has been aware that KCS has been searching for land for an elementary school. And so for full transparency, I feel that it's important that the public knows now, before we purchase property, that it's possible that the proposal could include a middle school instead. So I just felt like that it's important to state that now, before we approve any land purchase. So I look forward to the October 26 presentation to the Board and also to the input from schools and from the public. This will be a long process. I don't think it's being rushed. But for the moment, I'm thankful that we have a contract, and I hope that the Board will vote to approve this contract on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Horne. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Also, thank you, Ms. Horne, and thank you to the administration. Appreciate you all. There's a lot of work to get into an initial contract, and we had one that was proposed already. And so to be willing to put the brakes on and say, hey, we think there might be something better, I think shows leadership, because too often times, we get into things. And then, I'm not saying us personally as a Board, you just get into things and you're like, oh, my gosh, I wish I didn't pull the trigger on that. And I'm glad we're not in this situation here. So I have to believe that it's got to be better than the original one, or you would have kept the original one. So I appreciate the work, Dr. Adams, and all the others that have helped with that. And look forward to the conversation. Dr. Reiswick, I, I know that the plan is not clear in terms of what we're going to execute, but I appreciate your posture in saying, hey, we need to look further out and make sure that we're addressing the things that are going to be coming. Too many times in leadership, it's easy to take the thing that's right in front of you. And I think that's one of the challenges any system like our has, is we're also correcting some of that short sight in this from the past, right? And we've all done that in our own homes and our businesses and all those things. And so I appreciate you and the team being forward-looking and hope we'll continue to apply that kind of thinking to other decision-making, which is another reason why I brought the strategic plan. So, just a little plug there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Ms. Christie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not opposed to this property purchase. Did have someone reach out to me, though, asking about property on Ivy Farms Road. And of course, because of sunshine, I can't call Susan up and ask her about it. So I did reach out to the mayor and vice mayor today to ask for insights on that property. And one of the, someone from their office had responded back, and one of the things that was cited was zoning, that it was zoned residential. And I don't necessarily need an answer on this tonight, but I am curious if there are any rules, and this might be for you, Mr. Duport or Mr. Adams, at the state level regarding zoning in schools with growth what it is across the county. You know, this could be something that we run into later when we need new schools. I am curious about if there are any special rules regarding that. I don't need an answer tonight, but...
Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Long ago, and I may remember this incorrectly, but it seems to me that the way this Board used to consider land was to have a presentation of all of the possibilities that had been considered and the reasons that those pieces of land were either appropriate or not appropriate for our use. And I think Ms. Christie's question adds some validity to why we need to have that kind of discussion. It seems like we are being brought one option without necessarily reasons for that option. The other concern, well, the reason I have this concern is when we were building Harden Valley Middle School, if you recall, we kept hearing what things could not be done because of the limitations of the property. We can't build it any larger because of the limitations of the property. We can't do certain things with the road structure because of the limitations of the property. And none of those limitations of the property had been considered before we were in the middle of looking at building. And I think that is a really backwards way to do things, to go and have this piece of property and then figure out how we can use the piece of property. I would much rather have a discussion about the needs and determine what we need and then find the property that meets those needs. And it seems that we're, we're not to the point yet where we actually know that. So I would, I would like to suggest that we defer this for 30 days at least so that we can have some more information that we need regarding properties that have been considered or even properties that haven't, and why this would be the most appropriate use. Thank you.
Dr. Adams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Owen. I do want to address that, because we, there was a sense of urgency. We, there were 21 properties that we looked at. Out of those 21 properties, there were three properties that were viable. Out of the three properties that were viable, one was Mr. Scott's property, which we walked away from. The other property was a property that is not zoned for a school, and this property. We do have, we worked very closely with the town of Farragut, and we worked very closely with Knox County government to vet those properties. So I do, I do want to reiterate something that has been stated, and that is, there is a sense of urgency. That is a very, that is a premier piece of property. We've worked very closely with the owner of that property. If we lose that property, and I'm just going to just be candid and say that there, there is no other piece of property that is located within the town of Farragut that is currently zoned for a school. So, and I completely understand what you're saying. And moving forward, again, my team inherited the property that was under contract prior to me stepping in this position. And we would certainly bring those properties to the Board, but because of the sense of urgency, we were fortunate to have this property. The owner of this piece of property wanted to do this for the school district. But again, that is a very sought-out piece of property, and it will not be on the market long. So I just wanted to share that with you. And we can certainly share that information with the Board that clearly details the condition of all 21 properties.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. What I would really appreciate from the administration is having that kind of information, complete information on all of the things that we're considering before we're asked to consider them. When we need to come to a meeting and ask for information like that, that's a clear indication that we don't have enough information to make good decisions. We need that information on the front end, not on the back end.
Mr. McMillan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It may have been changed, but a number of years ago, I believe it was state law that said you could not have a school within 2,000 feet of where they sold alcohol. Does that, is that still in effect?
I'd have to look, Mr. McMillan. You directing that to me, right?
Well, I, we were looking. Anybody wants to answer it?
Yeah. I believe it's actually 1,000 feet, but, I mean, but I can double-check that.
I thought it was two.
Yeah, yeah.
Could be wrong. Bye.
Mr. Triplet?
Dr. Adams, a question for you. If we wait 30 days, what's, I mean, we lose that property? Or what's the status if we do wait 30 days?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I would, I would defer to Gary as far as the sense of urgency and the timeline on the contract that we currently have with the sales agreement. But I can say that the owner can, can pull out if we, if we don't vote on the property tonight.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Adams, I can, I mean, I can tell you what I, what I know. I mean, you know, as Dr. Adams stated, I mean, we've been working with, with the county. And, you know, the county has, has some very good, you know, Realtors that they work with. And we were brought this sales agreement. And I went through it and made some suggestions, you know, to make it more, you know, applicable to the school system in the county. But it was my, I was told, you know, by the Realtor that, I mean, as Dr. Adams has already stated, that, that this is, that this is a prime piece of property. stated, that that this is, that this is a prime piece of property and that, and that, you know, if the school didn't, if the school system didn't want to move forward, that they would be looking, you know, at other avenues, you know, in the very near future. So Dr. Adams wanted to get this on the agenda, you know, ASAP, which is what we've done. And if the board decides to defer on this, then then I guess the answer is it may not be available in another month.
Thank you, Mr. DuBois. And I do think, Dr. Adams, when the Scott property was discussed, I do think you had brought up the three viable properties. I believe there was a discussion about that. I think Ms. Terry Cotten may have the minutes on that, but I do think that that was brought up at our last discussion with the Scott property. I do have a question about that. You know, there's still a lot of property left to be developed in Farragut. I think they're building five apartment buildings right now. There's a lot going on in the Farragut area. So if we buy this property and build a school, whether that looks like an elementary or middle school, how how far out does that get us? Does that make sense? Like, how in our growth model plan, does that get us like 10 years, 15 years? What does that look like?
Madam Chair, members of the board, so what we're looking at when we talk about the Farragut solution is we're looking across the board. We're looking at elementary, middle, and high, of course. But we have capacity numbers for for each level.
Okay.
And so that will tell the tale, and we've got projection numbers that go out to at least 10 years, right?
Okay, okay.
Now, fortunately for the town of Farragut, you're within a certain city limits, right? And so with the projected numbers and the current developments, we do have an accurate depiction of what that would look like in within, say, 10 years. But they're really capped as far as capacity within the town of Farragut itself.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Yes. Okay. Where does it start? Hold on. Oh, right here. Okay. So what meeting was this, Ms. Cotten? Do you remember the date?
Yes, Madam Chair. This was in August 2022 work session when the Scott property was discussed.
Okay. Ms. Babad disclosed that she knew one of the property owners involved with the property purchase agreement for the land in the Farragut area. Is that where I'm reading from? Okay. For a new elementary school and stated that she may recuse herself from voting on this item. Mr. Watson asked if KCS facility experts felt this purchase was a good deal. Assistant Superintendent of Operations Dr. Adams reported that this property was the best deal out of the three properties considered as a future school site. Facilities Director Doug Chover concurred and said the properties looked at were not good for school sites. Mr. Chover said he could share a copy of the property appraisal from Knoxville's Community Development Corporation prior to the board's voting meeting on August 3. Dr. Adams shared his hope that the cost trends for property would go down.
Yes, Madam Chair. I believe, Dr. Adams, in that meeting, there was some information shared on the other 21 properties that you looked at at that time. So I can get that.
Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say, I think that Dr. Adams has really expressed this well, that we've met with the town of Farragut, we've looked at lots of properties, and those have been, some of those have been referenced before. But I, I don't think that delaying this 30 days would be wise. I think that, that just, it could, it could put the land purchase in jeopardy. And then if we get to that point, I'm not sure what we would do. So the, I think the question from the community has been around what school, what type of school would be built there. And as, as Dr. Reiswick has indicated, there's time to talk about that. We have time to talk about that. So the thing that we need to focus on is purchasing land, and I'm concerned that if we don't do that, that we will, we're going to end up back where we started and, I don't know where we'll, I don't know what the next option would be. It would not be, I would like to avoid, I would like to build a school in the town of Farragut. That would be what my personal choice would be. I think that that would serve the students and the, and the, the community well. We have a feasibility study that says that it would be wise to build another building and not to add on to existing buildings. That would be more expensive. There's not enough land to do that. We already have lots of issues right now with that. So, so I'm, my concern would be if we, if we don't do this, that we're going to end up putting a school that's going to be outside the town of Farragut. That would be difficult because those Farragut schools are the ones that have been, that are the concern. I've also heard some people talk about the Chodo area. The Chodo area, those students are zoned for North Shore Elementary Schools, so that's the reason that, that's not kind of, and the part of the conversation is because they go to North Shore, so that's not the school that's trying to be eliminated. If somebody wanted to build another middle school in the Chodo area, then what that would do, you'd split the populations, and so you'd end up with smaller middle schools. But we got to remember that what that does is you have less course offerings when you have a smaller school. So the fact that we have such a breadth of course offerings for students at Farragut is because we have the number of students that we have. So we have to be really careful about what we ask for. So, so anyway, I would hope that we would purchase, we would vote to purchase this land this week.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good memory on remembering some minutes from August last year. Thanks for taking a few moments to read some of that. It actually did cause a question, though. I think what you said, and correct me if I'm wrong, the three properties were not identified, but assuming one of them was the Scott property, because that's obviously what the agenda item was, the other two were not identified in those minutes. But if one of those properties is what we're talking about tonight, what Mr. Chover said is those other two properties were not good for schools. So I just want to make sure, I don't want to, I want to make, because you know how that sounds, right? It's like, a year ago, we said it's not good for a school, and now we're like, let's buy it. Yay! So I just want to make sure that we're clearing up the record. Okay.
Dr. Adams, can you clarify that a little bit? I know there was discussion, so yeah, now it's getting a little muddled. Can you clarify?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Watson, I appreciate you clarifying that, that is not the property. And just, just so the board is aware, the property that we are currently looking at was not on the market.
At that time?
Yes, that is correct. It is well below market value now. At the time when we were looking at that property, just to be quite frank, we could not afford that property.
Yeah, it's a, am I doing the math right? About 120,000 an acre or something like that?
Yes, and it was at 175,000 an acre.
Yeah, so I mean, when I did the math, when I first looked at the contract, I thought, oh, that's probably on the cheap for that. I, I do, I do think it's important for us as we just think about our role, it's always important to consider things like what Ms. Owen is saying, in that nobody in the public wants us to feel like we're just up here rubbing and stamping stuff. I mean, that's just, like, we can all go home, we can hang it up, you can get somebody else to rubber stamp your stuff, right? Right? And so to me, that's always the, and I know that's not what you're asking for, but that's kind of the question is like, how much do we really need to make a good decision? And some decisions weigh heavier than others. I mean, a land purchase that affects us for at least 10 to 20 years probably is a pretty big decision. So I'm not saying we shouldn't have more information about that, but I know that's what you all are wrestling with all the time about the sense of urgency, but also what's appropriate. And then the public's asking like, well, how are they making these decisions? Because it sounds like they don't have very much information. It sounds like they just like it, you know, they just think it's a good idea or whatever. So I get the tension in that, and I just want to acknowledge that. And I don't know what the sweet spot is on every decision, but I think that is what we have to constantly wrestle with and be asking ourselves, you know, what do we really need? What do we need as a board, as a body, to really help the administration make the best decision? Because it's a partnership, right? I mean, I think the way this thing is designed is you can't necessarily make the best decision on your own, we can't make the best decision on our own, but hopefully collectively, we're making the best decision, right?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Watson, I just want to reiterate that, yes, I mean, I think it makes total sense what we're saying about being public with it. The due diligence is there, and when we can produce those documents, but to Ms. Owen's point and to your point, that's, that's not what you see right now in rehashing and looking over those things. But I mean, I'll tell you, we got to a point that we were starting to say we may have to look outside of Farragut. And we had those conversations with the town of Farragut, that we really want to do something in Farragut. We don't want to put, you know, a elementary or middle school in Harden Valley, but that might be where we have to go to get land. So, so we have, and I think we can, I think Dr. Adams can provide that to the board, the properties, like you said, the 21 that got narrowed down to the three, that all had various issues to get to this place and this opened up. So, but, but the point is taken, understood that all that needs to be on, on the front side so the public sees all that, too, not just the work we've done on the backside.
Ms. Christie, patiently waiting.
Yeah, I was just going to say, like I said, I'm not necessarily against this property. It was just the response, that particular response, I found to be a little curious because this might come up in the future. So it was more of a question of if we can look into that and maybe get an answer somewhere down the road. But I do know that we have been talking about this for what seems like forever, before Dr. Reiswick was superintendent and before Dr. Adams came back.
It's been two years.
So, and I do appreciate the work you've done because I know, you know, you came on board and jumped right into Mill Creek, and now, now we're talking Farragut, and I know that's been a lot of work for you. So again, I'm not necessarily against the recommendation, I just have questions regarding that for future properties.
Mr. Deepler, and then I'll get you, Ms. Owen. Did you need to say something in response to?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McMillan, I was going to respond to his question earlier. So, so yes, you have, you have a good memory, Mr. McMillan? I mean, you know, so the state law says a maximum of 2,000 feet. Of course, I was, I was thinking about sex offenders can reside 1,000 feet or more, so that's what I was thinking about. But the caveat here is the state law talks about the county is the one that regulates beer sales and alcohol sales through the Beer Board. So the county actually cuts it down to 300 feet. So you, so believe it or not, yeah, yeah, you can have a, basically, you know, restaurant or a, a, well, yeah, so the, so the, the state law just says a maximum of 2,000 feet, but the county says it's, it's 300 feet. Sell beer for on-premises consumption within 300 feet of any school or church. There you go.
Good.
Yeah. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I have three questions now. On premises, what about to take out, like a package? Also, is that the same, does the town of Farragut have an ordinance that is different than the county ordinance? And the, the real question I want to ask is, I keep hearing that we want to keep this within the town of Farragut. Have we talked to the parents of the students there about where they prefer the school to be built? Do they want to keep the current zones? Do they want to keep it within the, within the town limits? Is that something that our parents are saying is important to them? And is it the most important thing to them?
Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, I think that for the most part, I guess the way I respond to that is that the parents whose children go to Farragut, they seem to like the Farragut schools, and so I would assume that they would want to, to keep their children in that area rather than a school in Harden Valley area. So, I mean, I've talked to the parents, you know, over the years who, the big concerns that I hear are about the portable buildings and the overcrowding and all of those things. So I would assume that because of, and I'm thinking about the, if you go from the town of Farragut over to Harden Valley Elementary School, you're in kind of a, that's a road that is really not much fun to drive. It's kind of a.
It's very windy.
Very windy. So that's one of those natural barriers that, I remember Russ Oaks always used to talk about natural barriers. That is, that's a natural barrier that kind of right now is the, the natural barrier and the interstate is a natural barrier that's there, which those are things that typically the school system uses in zoning. So we would have to change the zone, first of all, because if we built a school over there, then you're getting into the Harden Valley zone. So that would, that would also include Harden, Harden Valley students also. So it would be sending kids kind of into the Harden Valley zone. So I, I think that knowing the community, they would prefer to have a school in the town, you know, in the town. So we could, I mean, that's, the schools are located in the town right now, so this is, you know, half a mile from the other location. So I, I think that, that that would be, that would be advantageous. I think to your point, Ms. Owen, about the Harden Valley Academy or the Harden Valley Middle School, I mean, that's a very valid question because, you know, it's, it is limited by space and land and that kind of thing. So thankfully, this is 41 acres, so we will not have an issue with land being limited. But I also think that the board has to be very careful about getting too far into, to these things as a board, because then you get into the, the point of negotiating with a landowner and you're, that would, could be difficult. So I think that there, I know that Dr. Adams has worked tirelessly on this, and along with Doug Chover and Ryan Dillingham. So they've worked on this a tremendous amount. So they've done a lot of, a lot of things, and I think that's what board members expect for them to do, because that's not, you know, that would be difficult for each of us to weigh into those, you know, to all those in a public meeting. So they've done a tremendous amount of legwork on this. And so, Dr. Adams, I appreciate all the time and energy that you guys have spent and your team, because it's, it's been a tremendous amount. I mean, we're, we're so tired of talking about land. I mean, it's been, I'm, it's just, it's been a lot of, of discussion and a lot of feeling like we're not getting anywhere. So the fact that we have this contract is truly incredible, and it's an incredible opportunity. And I would, I, I think that it answers a lot of, I, I'm so thankful for the long-term solution conversation, because I think it does answer a lot of, or it provides for a lot of room to answer those questions in whatever way makes best, makes the best sense for the community and the students.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. I just wanted to thank Dr. Adams. I had heard from several parents over the weekend, several teachers in the Farragut schools over the weekend, and Dr. Adams called me back yesterday on Sunday afternoon, so thank you for that. We had a discussion. And as someone who lived through the Mill Creek new school, which is great, and rezoning, I definitely think that Farragut needed a new school like yesterday. And I am appreciative that we are being proactive in the long-term growth of the schools and the development out there. And I just want to be mindful that we are always including the community, the teachers, the parents, and the whole town, because that's where the concerns that I was hearing was that this, the teachers and parents hadn't heard anything. So, you know, as somebody, again, who worked through the Mill Creek, I know that that was appreciated. And so can you kind of speak to a little bit to the community involvement?
Madam Chair, members of the board, yes, ma'am, I certainly can. So we, just like the Mill Creek, we went out and we had community input, met with several families, had several sessions where we had one-on-one conversations with families, and this is no different. I know there is, there are rumors about the middle school, but the reality of it is we will put several options on the table. This is no different when we came before the board and put several options on the table for Mill Creek. And we basically said, what makes the most sense, right? And we will do the same. We'll look at, we'll look at feasibility, we'll, we'll look at what makes sense for capacity, whether it's a middle school, whether it's an elementary school, we'll look at what do we need to do for renovations, the middle school and the intermediate, middle slash intermediate. Currently, there are a lot of renovations that need to be done. We've just completed the facilities assessment that will, will show that. And I think that, that data is important as well as, as we look at how we move forward. And so the smartest thing to do is look at all of that data and, and put everything on the table and just really discuss what makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Mr. Deepler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Got some answers for Ms. Owen's questions. The, so, so the state law and case law says that on premises and off premises have to be enforced consistently, so they're both 300 feet. And it's, the enforcement and the rule falls to the county legislative body only.
Thank you, Mr. Deepler. Is there any other discussion on this item? All right. We'll move on to item B, 10B, annual action plan. Any discussion on that item? Ms. Spike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I read through this, and I really appreciate the scaffolding of the four areas and stuff like that. But one, one of the little ones that I had some questions about or some uneasiness about was. was the excellence in foundational skills, number one, action, enhance instruction through the development of deep content knowledge in ELA educators and objectives. The first A objective is to increase third grade proficiency rates on the T cap by 1.9%. So we've all gone through the third grade retention stuff. I think that this is a really great goal, but what I really worry about is that this is going to make our teachers and us and everyone really focus too much on teaching to a test. And, and I've kind of already seen that. I saw that a lot last year. And I get that we don't want to retain our third graders and that we want to do these things, but I worry about how this goal is kind of, or an objective is worded and if it could be put in different wording so that we're not just looking to like meet a mark on the T cap. Because I think through some of our conversation last year, you know, we talked about how that the student is more than that. And I see that also part B is decrease percent, percent of third graders performing below 40th percentile on the AMES web by 1.5%. I really, really like that. I wonder if there is a way that that could be tweaked a little bit? Or if anyone else might have worries about us getting to a place where we're really teaching to tests?
Ms. Lotner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Bike, I did just want to add a little bit of context around where this particular objective came from. So the state has set an expectation that LEAs reach a 70% proficiency rate in third grade over the course of the next five years. And that for the next three years, we close our proficiency gap toward that 70% goal by 15%. And so what you see reflected here is actually the objective the state has kind of set for us. So this was our nod to that expectation, not to say that we could not entertain another objective, but that objective will, you know, remain on the table for us, whether it's in the plan or not, just to remain in compliance with state law.
Yeah, I absolutely get that. And I think that, you know, I know other times we want to stay in compliance with policies and stuff like that, but if this isn't something that we're required to have in our annual plan, I, I do think that tweaking it a little bit, because I'm already seeing even in like talking to some parents and myself even being in some parent teacher meetings, that there's already being a lot of focus on it and I'm really worried about that. Thanks.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this was stated earlier, but just to reiterate to the public that we discussed this quite a bit at our retreat last week. So I don't know how much additional conversation there will be, but I did want to ask specifically, and I think it was referenced a little bit at the retreat, but I think, I know this is something that the public has asked me about this type of data. So on Action 11, enhance processes to address mental health obstacles and challenges. I know we just heard from Ms. Cook today, not necessarily specifically about whole child, whole child support teams, but certainly some of the work that's done in that space. It says that establish a process to leverage whole child support team data to identify trends and deploy school-specific supports. What is the data that we look at for whole child support teams?
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Watson? Yeah, so this is sort of the logical next step in the, in the evolution of the whole child support teams. Last year, the plan was to implement the teams at all of our schools. So the data that they'll be looking at for students will be not just related to chronic absenteeism behavior, those sort of indicators, but also their, their LEA and math data as well, to make sure that we're making decisions in the best interest of students as it relates to their, to their interventions. So we oftentimes equate whole child, whole child support with school attendance, but it's actually a much more robust process than that. And ultimately, it is about connecting students, using that expertise in the room to connect students to the resource or type of intervention that they, that they need, whether it's social, emotional, behavioral or academic.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Can you or your team just produce a bullet point list of what data that the whole child support team is gathering? Not the actual data points, just a list of what the data is.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Not the metrics themselves. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right, moving on to 10C. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution is something that we may feel is not necessarily needed because all of these pieces are laid out in different places. Some of them are laid out in policy, some of them are laid out in law. But a resolution is, is not necessarily something that is making a big change. Staff have asked if I would bring this and I brought this in because it was requested. And it was specifically requested because we have staff who feel uncomfortable addressing issues that they feel need to be addressed in their schools. So whether that is an issue of cleanliness or an issue of safety or an issue of staffing, they feel that it's important for them to be able to address those issues either with their supervisors or on up the chain as it may be necessary. And whether this is a, an actual or only a perceived issue, it is an issue for our staff. And they feel uncomfortable speaking with either their supervisors or even with us because they are concerned that there could be some kind of retaliatory action. And I wanted to bring this to help ensure and assure them that that's not something that we find tolerable. And just to restate all of those things that we already have said and to let our staff know that we value their input and to encourage them to let us know those things that they need to let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I can speak to that perception. I was, it's really interesting. I mean, really the moment I came on the board three years ago, I don't know if this is true of the rest of you all, but I automatically got a sense that some people don't feel like they can say what they need to say in this space. I didn't always feel like it was valid, but I did feel like it was true. Like there are certainly people, I've had people contact me and say, hey, this is the situation, this was what happening, this teacher wanted me to tell you this. I'm like, who's the teacher? They don't want me to tell you that. And I'm like, you know, like you're getting information thirdhand and I'm like, oh, it may be much better to actually talk to the source because then I might be able to be more helpful or be more directive or whatever. And I think some of that's probably just the nature of the beast, being a system as large as we are and very specific formal authority structures, you know, it's kind of hard to, you know, I know you've been trying to set a culture here, Dr. Ryswick, as you come in. And my guess is there's probably some limitations to what you can feel like you can even do. I mean, with a beast this big, right? You can't just get it exactly the way you would want it, although I would think you would. My guess is you would want to make sure that any person in our system at any point could bring up anything and be heard, right? I would guess that's true. Yeah, and so, but I know that reality, some people just don't feel that. And this certainly wasn't my idea, but I mean, to the degree that, I don't know if it'll have a direct effect or not, but I don't know that it's bad for the board to state, hey, like bring it on, right? Especially in, in the advantage of a continuous improvement, like how can you get better unless you not only hear from those outside sources, but you also hear from our internal stakeholders and feel like you're hearing that in a transparent way? I don't know if this is true, but Mr. Depler, do you typically sign off onto legal form before we see it? Because I don't see your signature on it. Didn't know if you had time to look at it or who worked with you on this, Ms. Owen?
On resolutions, I can, I've signed them before or after they've been adopted. Ms. Owen did send it to me and before it was completely finalized, I believe. Right, right. So, so I know she made some edits and I don't know that I'd, I'd fully looked over that. I know when she sent it to me the first time, I mean, I think her opinion was, or my opinion was as she stated tonight was, well, hey, we've, we've already got all this stuff, you know, so, but I don't, I don't see an issue with legal form at this point, if that's the question.
Thank you. If you, I'm, I'm certain if you do by Wednesday, you'll let us know.
Right. Yes, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that Dr. Ryswick would want to hear from teachers and I think he's put some mechanisms into place. However, I do think, I just talked with a teacher yesterday who definitely feels this way. So I think that still is pervasive. It's been, it's been the attitude for as long as I've been here. And I always hate to hear that because I know that Dr. Ryswick has a, an attitude of continuous improvement. And so that certainly I don't think is the way he would want teachers and staff members to feel. So I just hate, always hate to hear that. And I hate, I hate that even as we talk about, you know, a new school and, and everything in Farragut, I hate that teachers have felt that way because that's certainly not how I would want teachers to feel. And I regret that that's how they feel, you know, in this situation. So, so anyway, thank you.
Reverend Butler?
I concur that I've worked with a number of, heard from a number of parents, teachers and even students about retaliation once they complain or concern of that. So when I say I've worked with, and my role is, my former role as president of NAACP, it was a constant issue of those who are concerned with retaliation. I think it's important that the board in this, with a resolution like this, say, we do want to hear from you. You do have a right and it says a responsibility. So I think that this is something that we don't have to do. I think something that we can do to, as a board, say, we do support the, the reporting of, especially the part that says directly impacting students in Knox County. I haven't really worked, seen as much with this administration because as a board member, I started about the same time the superintendent did. But I do think it's still a concern and this is something that I would want to support.
Thank you, Reverend Butler. Any more discussion on this item? All right. We'll move on to the discussion on private practitioners. Ms. Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've, I've had several calls from folks who have been working to get private practitioners approved. And I know we had some emails, I had requested some information and I think some other folks had too regarding the timeframe for having those approved and that kind of thing. So what I would, I guess what I would really like to start with is some clarification on the process that parents are supposed to go through to have private practitioners approved.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Owen, yeah, so, so the process is entirely online and it, part of the process is outlined in policy. We're finishing up the administrative procedure, which will be a much more detailed explanation of that. Essentially, when, when the parent makes the request, they're sent a link for their portal and that's where they would upload their required documentation, which is, you know, that's their, where they have their proof of insurance, they have their, their releases and those pieces so that we can then engage with the provider. Once we have that information, the portal opens up for the provider and the provider has the, the list of required materials that they also have to upload. So that's their proof of insurance, their workers comp, those pieces. The, the thing I think you're really trying to get, get to is when it does take a long time, what takes, what takes the longest? What it, what tends to take the longest is when we get to the part where the practitioner has to go through the, the fingerprinting and background check. That is, when I get emails, that tends to be the holdup is there? Or there's, sometimes there's a holdup with getting the information that we need as it relates to the type of service that'll be delivered in the classroom so that we can make some determination as to whether or not those services may impede the learning of that student or the learning of others. So that tends to be, if there is a hangup, where the hangup occurs. Generally speaking, once the requirements are fulfilled, it takes about 48 hours to get everything finally done. Now admittedly, and Mr. Watson asked me this in the, in the board meeting back in July when we passed it, this is very, this was very much a process we were building out as we were trying to implement this policy because we were trying to move quickly to get services in place for the start of the school year. And we have been successful in that. I think in the, in the email that we sent to the board, just over 30 requests, all 30 of those have, have been approved. We have zero denials up to this point. Again, this process, like any new process, is not without growing pains and we have, we have tried to be responsive when we've, we've gotten feedback from the community to make some, make changes to the process to hopefully make it a little bit easier. But there are just certain things that we, we cannot, for example, again, if one of the hangups is the background check and fingerprinting, I mean, we've got to have background checks and fingerprints. These, these folks are coming into work in classrooms directly with, with students, right? And so that's something we want to make sure we're diligent about. We want to honor the work that's happening in our classrooms and we're committed to in that policy that these services would not interrupt the learning process for others. So we want to make sure that we're, that we're diligent in ensuring that that, that these services can be delivered without, you know, disrupting the environment and then in line with our procedures as it relates to background checks.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think once the, the complete procedure is set, I think that will make things a lot smoother. I, I also think part of the, part of the issue that parents may be having is with the, a difference in language that we're using when we talk about this. What, what I hear you saying right now is that we are looking at the, the learning environment and how this will impact that student in the learning environment as well as interruptions to the learning environment. And I think we're using possibly some shorthand for that and calling it principal approval. And this is the part that is confusing to parents because they feel that principal approval is not part of our policy. And so maybe if, maybe if we could clarify that somehow. So, and, and I know that the way you explained it is a lot longer and broader than principal approval. And so if we could say that in some way to make that clearer, what we're really talking about, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, sure, sure. I think so. And, you know, again, as, as we went into this process as the school year started, that was a piece of confusion that we had to clear up for, for everybody, right? Is it really is just, it's a confirmation more so than approval, right? Like, I'm, you know, confirm, is this going to disrupt learning, disrupt the classroom or, or isn't it, right? And so I think that's a well-made point. We are putting the final touches on the procedure and, and we'll certainly keep that in mind.
And I think confirmation is a, a much better word, too. And I, I don't think I would have put together that we were actually saying something different because I didn't figure that out until just now. So I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question for, just, just to make sure I'm clear. So once a provider is approved for one student, if, if that same provider is, is, is coming in for another student, that, that shortens that process, correct? They've already had the background check and all the things there.
So it would shorten it in terms of the background check? Yes. And then another thing that's worthy of note is some of our students do have more than one service provider, right? So in the event somebody's going to be out or something like that, you know, those, I guess substitute providers or whatever also go through that same process so that we can make, again, try to ensure that that student gets that service every day.
So my, my point really is, is that as you are bringing on different providers, there's not so, so many out there. So over time, that, that part will be covered once a provider is utilized by a student in Knox County schools.
Yes, sir. And like anything else we do in the district, too, like we'll also get better at it as well, right? Like, I mean, that's, it's a new process for, for everybody involved and our folks are working hard to get these processed as quickly as we can. And then, you know, sometimes we learn something really, you know, something really important that helps us speed up, right? And so I do think it'll expedite as we move forward.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Myers, not looking for a specific date, but do you have an estimated time of completion on the procedure?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Yeah, I wish July would have been great in hindsight. No, we're, we're, we're very- No, we're very, very close. I would hope that we'll have it ready to go before the next Board update.
So ideally, less than 30 days?
Oh, yeah, before our next.
Oh, Board update, you mean email. Okay. I got you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion on that item? Okay. Thanks, Ms. Owen, for that. Okay, Mr. Triplet, Public Forum.
Very good. Melanie Thury? Very good. If you will state your name, county residence, and then you will have three minutes.
I have to take my snowy off. Ready?
You're ready, yes. Go ahead.
Okay. I am here tonight to speak on the fifth action listed in the Superintendent's Action Plan, Recruit and Retain Teachers. Let's get real here. If we really want to retain our teachers, we must give them more support, not just a muffin and a coffee, and not just one afternoon a month during early release day. They deserve genuine support. A principal once said, "That's just what teachers do. They work on their own time." We should all be alarmed that a person in leadership said that a teacher working for free is acceptable. I am sure my son's teachers are not the only teachers in Knox County scrambling to create content modifications for their students with IEPs. But did you know that there is actually an option to have a direct service listed on a student's IEP which will fund up to 15 hours per week for additional material prep time? This direct service and its extra funding continues to be denied by local-level administrators. You may think, "But we already solved the issue on content modifications by employing a team to create a content modification bank." What they created are exemplars, which the Tennessee Department of Education already created. And did you know that many of the Knox County teachers don't even know about this modifications bank? They've never seen the exemplars. Teachers need help, and they don't sound like they're being very supported in this area. They need to be able to withdraw or deposit from your bank, and it doesn't sound like a bank because they're not able to access it. It sounds more like a vault. So I'm calling on Dr. Karen Loy. Show us the bank. We hear constantly that there is a shortage of special ed aides. My son in particular is still waiting for a full-time placement, which has put an extra weight on his case manager to scramble every day to fully and legally implement his IEP. Has anyone ever asked why we are short on TAs? Perhaps it is due to the fact that almost all KCS aides are assigned to a segregated classroom. There are very few students like my son with IEPs who are not placed in a CDC room for the majority of their day. In fact, there are likely only 10 in the entire school district. These students are also missing out on this valuable partnership because the TA usually has to stay in the special ed room. The culture of a third-grade classroom like Elijah is in is very different from a segregated special ed class. Providing an aide in the general ed classroom will benefit all parties involved, enrich the community of the classroom, and subsequently retain the teachers. This process works in other school districts around the nation who honors the letter and spirit of IDEA and see the success of best inclusive practices for all students and employees. Dr. Ryswick, I am relieved that you have included an action to staff and retain teachers. I do hope that my speech has put a face to your action. Elijah is not just my student, but all of our student, and I hope every time that you work on this action, you picture Elijah. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Jennifer Rose? Jennifer, you'll state your name, county residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Jennifer Rose, Knox County. I wanted to address an important issue within this month's Board meetings. The annual action plan recommended by the Superintendent. Upon reviewing the agenda, I was disheartened to find that Special Education Services were not, were absent from the plan, especially under the banner of success for every student. I believe it is crucial that this action plan, a document integral to evaluating the Superintendent's performance, fully encompasses the recommendations made by the Special Education Task Force and the resolutions that were brought in front of the chair, by the chair in front of the Board, and the Board passed. Accountability should be the cornerstone of our educational system, and this document used to gauge the Superintendent's progress towards these goals should not be intentionally vague. It is crucial resolutions and recommendations that need to be in there. In the pursuit of excellence for all students, we must ensure that Special Education Services are given the attention they deserve. I stand here before you today, not only as an advocate for this important call, but also as someone who has personally experienced negative and inappropriate behavior from a member of our educational team just last week. I had an encounter with Lisa Wagner, the Health Service Supervisor. While I understand that change takes time, it's essential to remember that attitudes and behavior can evolve. Tenure and position should not exempt anyone from accountability. My interactions with Lisa was prompted by a simple request for the policies and procedures regarding additional training for teachers and staff in handling seizures, a matter that is vital to my son's well-being as he returned to school after an increase in seizure activity. Unfortunately, my request was met with rudeness, inappropriate comments, and an uncooperative attitude. Instead of promptly providing the requested documents, Lisa's response was curt and dismissive. She even suggested that I consult children's neurology for information despite her role in developing staff training procedures and despite the fact that we have been battling his seizures for four years now. I am more than willing to share the email exchange with anyone interested in the understanding of the situation fully. It is disheartening that a straightforward request escalated into an unnecessary dispute. In conclusion, let us remember that accountability knows no hierarchy. As we move forward, let us work together to ensure that our actions reflect our commitment to every student, especially those with special needs. The success for our educational system depends on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Channing? Nicole, if you'll state your name, county residence, and then you'll have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Nicole Channing. I live in Knox County, and I have three children, two of whom have attended Knox County schools. And I have had my own experiences with special education in the county. I want to applaud the Board for adopting the new resolution, which you all adopted in September, which I hope augurs in a new and more positive era in special education in Knox County. I am cautiously optimistic the KCS can move from what I would call a compliance-oriented district to a service-oriented district. To do this, however, we need an action plan that includes SMART goals. With this in mind, I have a few concrete suggestions for amendments to the plan that has been put forward. First, under Action Item 10, Concerning Achievement Gaps for Underperforming Groups of Students, I would ask that you disaggregate this item into distinct items for the separate groups, which are English-language learners, special education, educationally disadvantaged, and students of color. Each of these populations faces different barriers. The solutions to addressing these barriers are different. The success or failure in addressing the barriers should be measured separately. Mixing heterogeneous groups together muddles the analysis. Second, with regard to Action Item 13, Uneffective Communication with Stakeholders, I'd like to point out that there's nothing in this item that appears to be specific or measurable. In other words, this item is not itself what is called a SMART goal. This should be remedied. I suggest that the Board add, after, under Action Item 13A, more specific mandates. In particular, that KCS develop and implement a public dashboard on the district website showing key metrics, which might be the metrics mentioned in the earlier action items, including the disaggregated item that I just mentioned, a baseline for each of these metrics, the goal, and the current measured progress toward that goal. Secondly, in the same item, I suggest that KCS solicit the input of community leaders and organizations, including specifically task forces, such as the Special Education Task Force, in developing key metrics so that the metrics are aligned with the goals that matter to the various communities addressed and encompass meaningful information related to those goals. I have a number of other comments that I might make, but I want to keep this short, and so I would also just simply mention that a few years ago, I did my own study of Knox County schools TCAP scores, and I actually went through in hand, put in every single school's TCAP scores for the different groups. These groups measure vastly differently. At the time, and I have it in front of me, this is 2017.
Thank you, Nicole. I think the time's up. Thank you.
Anyway, the groups are very different. Let me put it that way. Okay?
Thank you. Hannah Scott?
Madam Chair, I do have a response. I can respond after the.
Yes.
Actually, not really a response, but maybe a clarification. Dr. Ryswick, on Item 10 that the Speaker referenced, the way I read that with the footnote is that the table was trying to make that short, but it identified it more clearly in the footnote. Is the intent to actually publish that data in a disaggregated form, or is that note, the intent of that note just to identify and define what those groups are? I do agree that that information is best seen disaggregated.
I'll pass that to Ms. Law.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, so the intent would be to keep this plan, you know, as discreet as possible, and that's.
In terms of the number of words.
Yes, yeah, in terms of the number of words and just the ability to consume. What you'll see during our quarterly work session is the final report out on our annual action plan, and that's where you'll see that information disaggregated. And so you won't see the report out as a lump sum total for all three of those student groups. You will see our ELL progress, our special education progress, and our progress toward moving the needle where students of color are concerned.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Very good. Sorry about that. Hannah Scott? If you will state your name, county of residence, and then you'll have three minutes.
Sure, thanks. I'm Hannah Scott. I am a Knox County resident, but I teach at Farragut Primary, so that's what I want to talk with you all a little bit about today. I know it's already been covered, and I appreciate that recognition, and in contemplation of my fixed time limit, I want to be as direct as possible, so forgive my bluntness. Myself and my colleagues and some other members of Farragut Primary just wanted to share some concerns that we had about what was proposed. You know, originally, we had covered, or it had been covered, that in the news it was going to be a K-5 school. So when we got a surprise Facebook notice on Friday morning from Ms. Horn, though I think intentions might have been different, it came as out of the blue and was, you know, shocking for all of the Farragut teachers. The plan wasn't circulated in a normal channel of communication, notice announcements, anything like that, and there was a typo on the date, so I think that there was a lot of confusion over kind of what was going on and what the plan was for that. Like I said, despite intentions, the teachers in a lot of the community in Farragut felt blindsided and very overlooked by the sharing of that. Considering that plan, I just wanted to speak to a little bit of, you know, some of the thoughts in that, thinking of that plan and that post, we would be abandoning the newest-built Farragut school, the primary school. That would then be left vacant without plans for its use. Despite being overcrowded as an issue, we're then abandoning a school that houses over 1,000 kids right now. Many people that I've talked to have voiced a distrust and belief that the proposal for arranging to abandon the primary school, to then move to a more outdated school, the intermediate school instead, is actually, you know, one classroom smaller than the primary school. It has more of the portable classrooms, which I know you all brought up as a concern. And I think that a lot of people I have chatted with shared the concern in our best interests are not being considered at all, and that's how we feel, you know, from a teacher's standpoint. There are whispers in the community that private schools are looking to expand, you know, several years from now, and that some school board members have connections with private schools, and to the extent that this is true, we really hope that appropriate measures are taken. I know right now we can kind of backpedal and say that ideas are being thrown out, and sharing them, though it was positive, was really detrimental to a lot of the teachers. And I really just want to implore you to think of the ramifications of your actions prior to throwing out ideas on social media. I think that Farragut, as a community, deserves better, and I know that you all are up to that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Michael Scott?
Hi. My name is Michael Scott. I reside in Knox County. I came here as a supporting husband and listened to you guys for a little while, and now you made me come up here and talk, so I wanted to joke and say, you know, first time here, longtime fan, but I don't know what you guys do. I don't pretend to know what you guys do. That being said, so, from a completely neutral perspective here, I mean, I don't have a kid, I'm not a PTO mom, if you couldn't tell. There's a lot of confusion here for me. I mean, it's hard keeping up with stuff. I kind of resonated with, I think it was Mr. Wesley over there. At one point, he said, you know, "So we don't know what it is, but we're voting on it," at which point, somebody gave him some more information, but then here we are with the proposal of this school, which is a significant capital expenditure, asking for more information, and rather than getting more information, we're pushing to obtain it without any kind of data backing it up. There is data, but we've not seen it, and so like I said, I like, you know, I can be a little bit scattered sometimes, and I like to know what I'm doing, right? So Googling on my phone within the first couple of minutes, this is part of why I was confused. I like to learn the rules about something before I go there so I know how things work and I can, you know, socially interact appropriately. I'm hearing a lot of talks in the background about things that are happening at retreats, you know, not in the public forum. There's specifically statutory law that declares that you can't, you can't speak about public policy or do public business in secrecy. Mr. Law, you're probably familiar with that. There's Knox County Board of Education policies that require you to inform educators, or community, rather, that you represent through multiple channels of communication. I work with a lot of nonprofit charities. I know it takes a lot of red tape to get something to where it is. Here, there's a lot of discussions, and there's no reason it should have been here at this point when we're hearing about it. And if we're so desperate, there are other options. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, you know, tell you guys what to do, but there's lots of options. You can rezone, you can buy an option, you know, reserve the right to buy something. You're buying a right to buy, so you can buy yourself more time for due diligence and to, you know, figure out if it is a good investment. It's a long-term investment. It's going to affect a lot of people, and so far, I've not heard about what the people want. I've heard a sales pitch, frankly, is what it seemed like. And again, I'm kind of like my wife, so I'm trying to, because of the time, I'm a little bit more blunt than I'd like to be. This is a reasonable person, kind of third-party perspective here. No interaction. It's my first time here. Actually, a nice gentleman had to walk me into this building when I got here because I couldn't find it. So that being said, I'm a member of the community. I'm a taxpayer. This is just my perspective based on what I saw here today, just from a bird's-eye perspective, without kind of, I mean, I didn't want to talk until I heard everything, and then I felt compelled to talk. So, thank you for your time. Hopefully, I'll see you guys again too soon, and everyone have a good evening. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, Madam Chair, that concludes Public Forum.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Oh, Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is only the second time, and it was twice in one night, that I've addressed Public Forum, but I do think it's important to clear up.
Yeah.
Public notice on retreats because it is public notice. We don't like go away to, you know, Gatlinburg or something and hang out all week.
Retreat is probably the wrong word. It's more of a workshop.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so can we have some explanation about how that's done and what was done for this particular work session?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know who wants to do that.
Yeah, Mr. Dugler, do you want to speak to that? Our work, so every annually, the Board does an annual workshop, which is a two-day workshop, usually the third week of September. All of our meetings are public notice because we do follow under the Sunshine Law, which means we cannot speak outside.
and hang out all weekend.
I think retreat is probably the wrong word.
Yeah.
It's more of a workshop.
Yeah. Yeah, so can we have some explanation about how that's done and what was done for this particular work session? I don't know who wants to do that.
Yeah, Mr. Diggler, do you want to speak to that? Our work, so every annually, the board does an annual workshop, which is a two-day workshop, usually the third week of September. It, all of our meetings are public noticed, because we do follow under the sunshine law, which means we cannot speak outside of the public meetings. And so that was public noticed. We did have members of the public. We did have members of the media there. So do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think you said it well. It's public notice, just like these meetings are here. I would also add that what Mr. Watson said, I mean, you all could go to Gatlinburg if you wanted to, but it's my understanding you haven't done that for many years, because you're trying to save the taxpayers' money to stay here in Knox County. So, but if you were to go to someplace like Gatlinburg, it, again, would be public notice, just like any other meeting.
Yeah. My point in asking for that clarification isn't about our particular speaker. I mean, he's acknowledged that he doesn't have a lot of experience with our school system. I just want to make sure that people who are out here listening do understand that those workshops do get public notice.
Correct.
It's not about correcting him. It's just about informing the public in a proper way, so.
All the public notices are also on the website. And I know that's, you know, something that's a priority for all of us, is making sure that we have open and transparent government. And I tell you, I really enjoy our workshops, our annual workshops. I encourage anybody to come to those. We really, we hear from all the staff members on what's going on in their day-to-day. And then we also, the second day, talk about board business and anything that the board wants to talk about. So I encourage anybody to come to those. I think they're really interesting. They're full of information. So thank you for that, Mr. Watson, so that we had a chance to clarify that. And with that, we will go into Board Forum. Reverend Butler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I really wanted to respond a little bit about what I heard today about the, I'm trying to think, the, I think you said the improvement, what term did you use about the Farragut, the Farragut solution? Was that it? The Farragut solution. And I think that what I heard was back in August of 2022, there was a presentation that had all of the information about the previous properties and the plans for the property that initially was picked, but then, for whatever reasons, over time, that was not the right property for us. And now this property's been bought. And I think that was bought with the understanding you had discussed it previously. I wasn't at the August 22 meeting. I had been sworn in yet. So I have to go back and look at that, but it's there. So I think that the effort, and I do agree with what Ms. Owen said, rather, that bringing it back to us would have been really helpful for us to get that prior to this meeting, so we could, we could have that information in front of us. But I do think that that's part of our process. So I'm looking forward to the McKenneyville-Lonsdale-Bomai, I'm not sure if they call that the solution, maybe the Western Heights solution, whatever it's been called. But I'm looking forward to discussing that and the possibilities. I like the possibility that it could be a elementary school, or it could be a middle school, or it could be whatever, because you give the community a chance to say, "This is what we see as a whole that we might need." Obviously, it is this board and this district's responsibility to make those decisions and to do all the things. But I do like the process. I think we can get better at it, but I do think the process is there. So I'm looking forward to the MLB discussion and really have an opportunity for the community. I really like the fact that the community's pushed back and said, "Hey, we want to have a conversation about this." I think that's really important. So I'm really excited, and I have a lot of hope for Farragut, but also for MLB.
Thank you, Reverend Butler. Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My, I know all of ours was, my email was blowing up over the weekend around the Farragut conversation. When I first started seeing them, I was thinking, "Why is it blowing up? Like, I haven't heard what they're saying. Like, I haven't heard that information." And I thought, "How is that happening?" And so I appreciate, I mean, we see this over and over again. I think it's always a good thing, when a community is concerned about something, or when they're confused about something, that you elevate and use your voice. And I appreciate you all doing that and bearing here and advocating. I do think there's still a lot more information that has to be gathered and presented. And I don't know that we know exactly what the plan will be, but I'm sure that you all will be there to help discuss it and kind of vet it. So I think that's always a good thing, and I just want to use this as an opportunity to encourage all of our communities to do that. Like, if you're unsure, ask the question. If you want to be at the table, come, and we'll try to figure out how to make a seat, to be able to hear from the community. Because at the end of the day, you know, one of our speakers tonight said, "It's not just my son, it's our son." I think all of us truly believe that, that we are stewarding your children. And so, you know, I take that responsibility seriously, but appreciate you all bringing your voice. So, thank you.
Mr. Triplett? Ms. Pike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say thank you to John Reiswick and Chief Jason Periard, our security team, and all the people that have worked so hard over the last week with the incidents that have happened at West High School. I appreciate their responsiveness to me and to other people. I know that I have gotten a lot of emails and a lot of calls, and I try to respond to everything, and it has been hard to keep up with, so I can only imagine what they're getting. I spoke with Chief Periard this morning on the phone. We had a great conversation. We talked for quite a while. And I also really appreciate his listening to me and my ability to give parents and students a voice. And I'm glad for also you listening to me and hope that we can find some solutions to make everyone feel safe coming to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horn? Ms. Christie?
Well, not to copy Reverend Butler, but I'm going to copy Reverend Butler. I just want to say that, you know, we genuinely want communities to be excited about new schools. I mean, that's a big deal. And, you know, I'm excited about the process and about the South Knoxville solution, Dr. Adams, when that comes, that, as well as the MLB. So, and just thank you for the time that you put into all this.
Thank you. And I just want to thank the parents and teachers for coming out and making your voices heard and sharing those with us. It truly is a community process, and, you know, everybody should be involved, and everybody's voices should be heard. And I want to thank Ms. Cheryl again in her HVA teaching-as-a-profession class for coming out. I became really close to your class last year, so I'm really excited to get to know the students again this year. And just one last thing, congrats to our own Cory Lotner for being named the Knoxville New Sentinels 40 Under 40 Class of 2023. Congratulations, Cory. Well deserved, well deserved. And with that, we are adjourned. That was fun.